Okay, we'll call them any orders seven P M. It is Monday, June twenty third, twenty twenty five, uh, seven o'clock. P M in the central office conference room. We will stand and see.
I proudly introduce to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, um, it's having on the agenda is conversation and I really love the agenda. Say almost every second. And they go say.
Hi.
All opposed and sign. Motion passes. Um, welcoming visitors. We have Sue with us online from the legendary and we have this year. And of course you can establish. Um, we'll move on to our student outcome rules.
Okay, I'm sorry. I don't have it up up there on the board, but you have each of you has your. And I don't know, Sue, do you want me to go ahead and do my report first and then do the questioning or do you?
Um. Yeah, let's do that. I think we could do it either way, whatever works for you guys. But if that's what you have you how you've agendized it, I think it's fine.
Okay. Um, okay, so this month we I'm reporting on goal progress, uh, or goal number one and giving it goal progress measures for those. Reading was this last testing was. This was just fantastic how how the kids did in all, uh, one, 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 two, and one, three. And, um, as you can see from the trend line, you know, they were they're on track, all of them. Finished out the year strong. They recovered our loss that we had in suffer in, um, one, two, we dropped a little bit, but I don't even, you know. You look at the trend line, so our trend line was up from last year significantly, so. Um, you saw from my report that seventy-three percent of our students. Six or above the fifty percent power compared to sixty percent at the same time last year. Um, I had some questions from some of the board members that got sent out to asking about, you know, implementing the science of reading, so. I, Mr. Um, double said a kind of backward math because we just, we knew we were going to have to start science of reading when I was principal my last year. So we started to get gearing up for getting the teachers trained, but then we started training our teachers on letters. And I think that has had a significant impact on us, um, on our team and because our teachers in K one have gone through, he went to now. Have gone through letters training, which is pretty intense, and then they learn how to assess, then they learn how to take that data. They learn how to, you know, do interventions for those kids, so a hundred percent of our first graders met that fifty percent goal. It's great. And whole right? Yeah, so that was that was just excellent on from off that end. And then, you know, and we talk about this, we have those conversations, we talk about what our interventions are going to be. And then when we adopted the, um, new, uh, resource up in four through six and, um. Later on, I mean, you you read the, um, engagement, uh, engagement report how four, five and six, especially six was just really engaged with. That new resource that gave them, you know, the choice and, um, voice and what they wanted to do, but using those high quality resources has has been, I think. Impactful and I believe greatly is the same thing too, so. But they're always adjusting interventions. It's always been that way, right? If something doesn't work, try something different. So the elementary teachers are very, very good at doing interventions, but then you're also dealing with. You know, smaller, um, sets of, uh, standards, you know, when you get up in the high school, you've got kids that. Are supposed to know how to read, all right, because they're reading the, uh, learn instead of learning to read. So then their skill sets get a lot wider and a lot more bear. You know, when you get up there, how do you decide what's going to be your what you're going to hone in on? So, uh, I think one of the questions was what what would be happening and what changes are being, uh, done up in the high school? To keep kids engaged, that goes into my engagement, but it kind of ties into this also. The teachers up there are, um, talking about. Doing some different classes instead of just offering English nine, ten, eleven, twelve. They're also talking, they're talking about offering, um, journalism for class. And in fact, uh, one of the ideas that we had in order, we are not going to have, um, an advisor for the yearbook. And instead doing it in the classroom, and I is that Kaylin is going to be doing that, so being journalism, but trying to get, you know, the kids. More excited about that stuff and so then having an impact on, you know, our R E L A. I know, still focusing on those standards that they need to have, but you know. So sixty-three percent of our students in grade seven through ten scored above it last year. At this time, it was forty-five percent, so. Once for a year, so I I I got it was it's looks fantastic for math, so. I'm excited to get the N D S A data because our teachers, I mean, we have these conversations all the time now, like. In our P L Cs, we're having these conversations and our late starts, like, what are we going to do here? We're focusing on things that in the past, we just were not that narrow focused. It was just smattering all over, hoping that we would hit the spot on wall. Um, so we talked about writing, you know, we knew what was going to be on writing for N D S A, so our teachers prepared for. They prepared and taught the kids, they practiced writing, you know, what they need to do, so. Really excited to see how our N D S A comes. I hope I don't get smacked down. I don't know if we can get our scores, but. You know, if you look at our data here and our progress monitoring, it should do well on the N D S A.
And those results should be back by now.
The fall. Yeah, they're working on, yeah, they're working on pulling together, um, you know, the sets of data. Off scores are going to be, so they're working on that this summer, but they they're saying in September, September, I think, right, right towards the end and we should have.
So it's not going to speed up like a thing along the program.
Mm-hmm.
About getting more like marketing plays.
Yeah, so they'll know, you know, like what the range is going to be for, you know, whether they're one, two, three or four, because they'll have the data to have those numbers set. They might have to adjust them, but at least they'll have them, so we can get at least some preliminary data. So that was the big part in the last couple of years was we were able to see it right away, so we knew where we were at. So when you were planning for the fall, you use that, you know, as moving forward, but. All right, Sue, it's all you.
Was looking at your monitoring report and I was looking at your previous monitoring reports, like for your goal itself last year, just kind of seeing how the pieces fit. And then I couldn't find the zoom screen. Um, all right, so we are conducting this evening, part two of your goal monitoring training. We did part one last month, and so what we're going to do tonight is just a quick review of that. And then what we're really going to dig into, because last time we talked about. You know, what what you're what monitoring is, you know, what you do before monitoring. Um, now we're going to start talking about what have more of what happens in monitoring and really honing in on effective questioning. And like I shared last time, this is where you're you really as a board member. Want to develop your skills is that effective inquiry and effective dialogue in your goal monitoring with your superintendent. And let me tell you, this is just a side note, like looking at your data tonight in this report. Um, and knowing where you were last year, remember last year. You exceeded your target on your goal progress measures, but then were just shy of your goal, right? And looking at how far your district has exceeded this year, your target on your goal progress measures. Um, I'm super psyched to see how you guys do on the goal itself. And this really is a testimony to the work that your organization is doing. Like this monitor report right here, before we even dive into this training, really shows the aligned focus. That your board and your superintendent and the rest of the staff in the district are really starting to achieve. And that, I mean, y'all, y'all are rowing the boat in the same direction, and that's when you start achieving these really great things for your kids. All right, so we are just going to spend a couple of minutes reviewing what is monitoring, why do you monitor? Who would like to share first? What do you remember about why you monitor? Kind of the, I want to call them do's and don'ts. Uh, what are your reflections on our conversation from last time? Who will share first?
It's like keeping score in a game. You need to know where you're at.
Yeah, it's like keeping a score in the game. You need to know where you're at. Why do you need to know where you're at in the middle of a game? Why does it matter?
Shouldn't change your strategy if you need to.
You can change your strategy if you need to before the game is over, right? Once the game is over, you can't. You you've either won or you've lost. Um. What else do you want to? Check in on what's going on in the middle of the game?
Make sure everybody's understanding what's going on.
Make sure everybody has a shared understanding of what's going on. What is our current reality? Do we actually know? You know, are we winning or losing? Are we where we wanted to? I don't want to call it winning or losing. Are we where we want to be at this point in time? For our students, yeah. Those two remember about our conversation last time?
Last side of the table?
When should the board receive the monitoring report? When should you receive your report?
We receive it several weeks before the meeting.
Yeah, should we? We usually recommend you receive it with with your agenda packet, but before the meeting, you should receive. Um, you should receive the monitoring report. What do you want to make sure is on that monitoring report?
Therefore, we didn't have a goal there.
Your goal to start with.
The goal, what are we monitoring? What are we actually looking at? Yep, there are four, there are four different things. These should look. Say that again.
The superintendent's response and what actions to take.
Yep, superintendent's response. What what is the superintendent's interpretation of the data? Why are we, where are where are we relative to where we wanted to be? It's our current reality relative to that target. Um, why is that our current reality and what are the next steps? Yep. What are the other two? Does anyone remember? Two other things you want to check and make sure are included in that report before your meeting.
Your previous data.
Say that again.
Your previous data.
Previous data.
Your goal.
The goal.
If we're on track or or no.
Yeah, the superintendent's assessment. So what are we actually monitoring? That goal or goal progress measure? And if it's a goal progress measure, I always recommend that it also includes the goal that that progress measure is aligned to. What is our, what is the data? Both where are we at relative to where we wanted to be? Where have we come from? And where are we going to, right? And I'll tell you, just as you guys were reviewing your monitoring report tonight, even I was looking at. How did, how did you do last year, right? Knowing that last year you just fell short of achieving. Your target goal itself. You know, are you you've made such big gains, I think it is likely again that you you will achieve your goal target this year. Um, but it's important to know, put this this year's data in context with previous years. And then also, where are we going? Where not only where do we want to be this at this point in time, but what are those out year targets? Um, the superintendent's assessment, on track, not on track. Met the target, didn't meet the target, exceeded the target, because it's the superintendent, not the board, that should be making the interpretation of the data. Of course, anything the superintendent, anytime the superintendent's. Explicitity, explicit, I can never say that word right, is not explicit. It opens the door for the board to interpret the data, and the board shouldn't be the one interpreting the data. And then the last thing being, what is the superintendent's response? All right, so now we're going to move on tonight and talk about during goal monitoring, and you should have a few documents, just as you did last last time. One called effective goal monitoring. One called technical versus tactical versus strategic. And another one that has four columns with different kinds of questions in it and. Those latter two documents just set aside, we're going to first start with this effective goal monitoring document. So once the board is determined that that monitor report has all of the components the monitor report is supposed to have. And if in advance it doesn't, you should bounce it back to your superintendent, say, hey, it's missing this, please correct this before our monitoring session. If you arrive in that monitoring session and it still doesn't have those four criteria, stop. Do not proceed with your monitoring session. Ask your superintendent to correct it. And then, uh, make a motion to postpone that monitoring session until your next regularly scheduled meeting. I don't anticipate this is ever going to happen with your current superintendent, uh, but boards should always be prepared for superintendent's change. And when Anna wins the lottery and moves to to Cabo, you're going to.
She's taking us with her soon and she's going to move to the school.
Probably all, but you're going to have another board there.
You guys are talking about.
You're going to come with her. Um, so now what happens during a monitoring session? You guys have been really strong on this over the past year and a half that you have been doing goal monitoring. So this isn't a, you're not doing a good job. This is about how to increase effectiveness, how to grow your muscle, grow as an organization. In this work and take it up, uh, uh, level it up even further. So during your goal monitoring sessions, just like you conducted tonight, your superintendent is going to give her report. And then the board is going to start into a dialogue. The recommendation is that you spend about eighty percent of your time looking backwards. You want to understand what is our current reality? Why is this our current reality? What can we learn from our current reality? Eighty percent of your time is looking backwards. The reason for that is if you don't fully understand what your current reality is based on looking backwards. Like reviewing that proverbial tape, it's hard to assess what the next steps. You know, what what's appropriate for next steps. Um, and I'll give you an example. I had this is a superintendent that I asked. You know, how how did you get these results, right? You're outperforming the state in this area compared to any other district in the state. How did you achieve these results? The superintendent's response was, I don't know. That superintendent won't be able to replicate those results if they don't know how they achieve the result. Um, so whether you're doing all the things that you think you should should be doing and you're not getting the results, or you're getting great results. Out of the blue, it's still worth diving in to understand why. So if you look on. The document does not have page numbers. Um, I apologize for that, and I I think I shared with you last time. This is borrowed from the Council of Great City Schools. It's just a great document that I I find really helpful for for this process. But under this section, during goal monitoring, which is at the bottom of page two. So starting at the top of page three, there are four columns. The first three are about current performance, or, you know, how to, I'd say the looking backwards, how to how how do we get to where we are right now? And the far right column is future performance. These are really centered on strategy. So we're going to flip to another document really quick, and that's the one. Is in order to dig into what are strategy questions, let's go deeper into what are technical and tactical questions. To then get into strategic questions. So if you would please pull up that document. It's called Technical, Tactical and Strategic. And I have officially too many windows open. So there are three types of questions a board member would ask. Technical is trying to understand how something is measured, or what are those details? Like, a lot of times a technical question might even just be an abbreviation, or like your superintendent mentions science of reading. But board members like, I've heard that term before, but I don't know that I really understand what science of reading is. Madam Superintendent, could you please explain what science of reading is? That would be an example of a technical question, just trying to understand something that's being talked about. Um. Our coaching recommendation is technical questions should be asked in the Q and A document in advance of the board meeting. The exception would be if you're in your meeting. And somebody in your superintendent or something comes up in the conversation that you don't, you don't understand something about about that topic. And you need to understand that in the context of that goal monitoring session, absolutely ask the question. But any technical questions as you're reviewing your monitor report in advance of the meeting, you're sending in your questions in advance. Absolutely send those technical questions in 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 advance, because you want to spend your monitoring session really centered on strategy. The next kind of question is tactical, which is trying to understand how something is done. So again, using this example of science of reading, your superintendent says. You know, we're we're using science of reading. You already understand what science of reading is, but you want to actually understand what that looks like. What is that? What is what is the implementation of science of reading look like? That would be an example, the tactical question. The, and again, those are questions to send in with your Q and A in in advance. You really want to be using those strategic questions in your monitoring session. You're really going to want to dive into that data, understand at that macro level what's working, what's not working, why it's working or not working and for whom. And what the plan is next. Those questions can be sent in advance, but they. What I would recommend sending those strategic questions in if you send them in advance, just so your superintendent is prepared for that question in the meeting. And then. Instead of answering those strategic questions in the Q and A document, ask them in the meeting during your goal monitoring session.
So you're saying you don't want Anna to put those in the packet, like with a Q and A?
Would recommend not. Correct. I would recommend not answering strategic questions in the Q and A document.
Just be prepared to discuss it during the meeting.
Yes. Any other questions before we move on? And I'm not going to. Read all of that. You have it for reference. Um, so now we're going to go back to that other document, the effective goal monitoring. And those four columns, so. These aren't exact questions you should be asking every time. But they are things to have in your mind as you're reading that monitor report and trying to. You know, garner from that. What's going on with your current reality of your students? And I don't think, do you guys disaggregate any data at all?
No, because actually small our groups are.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
So let's say, for example. On. We'll just use on one point one, right? We know that it's too small for my old eyes. You're eighty-one percent.
Yeah, eighty-one.
Um. You could ask your superintendent, are there are there any differences you're seeing between kindergarten, first and second grade? Um, are there any groups of students that are excelling farther than that eighty-one percent? Or are there any groups of students that are behind that eighty-one percent? So again, you don't have to ask these questions verbatim that are on here. That's not the recommendation. The recommendation is to use these questions as you're digesting these reports, digesting what you're hearing from your superintendent. And all of your strategy questions may not even come up for you before your monitoring session. They may come up for you as you're listening to to your superintendent's verbal report. Oh, wait, hey, I'm hearing something that's piquing a question for me. Um, but you're really wanting and going to want to engage in a dialogue with your superintendent. Um, it starts out in this sort of inquiry based sort of space, but over time should turn into more of a conversation. And that's going to take a while. Examples of ineffective questions. Why do you think, take a moment to read through these examples of ineffective questions? As you're reading these. And reflecting on them, why, either as a whole or any particular one, why would these be examples of ineffective questions?
Look, I have heard from the class.
Say it a little louder if you would, please.
You're supposed to be looking backward, not forward, so like the last one is telling you to look what happens next, but you're supposed to be looking at the data that's already happened.
Yeah, I mean, you can ask questions about what's happening next after you understand. You know, how how the game is going so far, and what this is saying is only asking questions about what's going to happen next without having it grounded. And what your current reality is based on looking backwards would be an example of an ineffective question. Why do you think that 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 is defined as an ineffective question?
Take into account the historical data.
And you got to be able to fix what happens next.
Yeah, there's no context. And and a a future strategy might sound great, but it could be the wrong thing if you don't understand. How you how you've arrived where you currently are, yeah. What other thoughts and reflections do you have as you look through these and why these would be? Areas that would be ineffective for questions.
The first one would be giving your superintendent directives, and that's not our job.
Yep. Um, favorite kind of question, um, superintendent, why aren't you doing this strategy? Why aren't you doing this instead? Still a question, but it's veiled as a directive of superintendent, and when I say favorite, I'm being very sarcastic. Um, it is probably one of the most common ineffective questions. Where board members do a lot of mental gymnastics to tell the superintendent what they should or shouldn't do. Or even tell the superintendent why the data is telling this story. Well, superintendent, do you think that we didn't meet our target because, um, we had too many snow days this year? It's not the board's job to infer. It's the superintendent's superintendent's job. What else is coming up for you as you? Were reading these examples of ineffective questions?
If you're asking anything that doesn't reference the data, uh, I mean, that's our measuring point, so I guess it would be irrelevant.
Yeah, did not add, why do you think it's important or why do you think it's recommended to not ask questions that don't reference data?
Their data is their unit of measurement that's. What we're tracking.
Yeah, yeah, um, again, I've seen it happen all the time where. Because you're talking about a specific, you know, your superintendent brings up something that is tied to the data. But then that can open the door for a whole lot of other conversations, a lot about a whole lot of other things. That don't actually have to do with the report that's in front of you and the data that you're looking at. So we're going to jump down here a little bit, and I'm not, I am not going to coach you on evaluating the quality of your goal monitoring. If it's some future date, this is something that you all want to learn about. We can absolutely have that conversation, but we're I'm not planning on talking with you about that tonight. Um, there's a whole. Um, there's a whole lot more to that than I think we have time for. Um, or, and even that I think you might need. But what we are going to do is go down to that box that says monitoring conversation evaluation rubric, because it has some really helpful things in it about ineffective monitoring and effective monitoring, some good guidelines. And, and what we're going to do in a minute here is draft some practice questions. So for boards that actually evaluate themselves, they're, they're evaluating themselves using this rubric about was, you know, was it strategy focused, measure focused, ask oriented, results focused and time bound? And I really want you to focus on the items under effective monitoring. It, it's helpful to also review what's under ineffective monitoring. But that only really helps you know, I just think it's another measure of knowing if you were effective or not, but framed in the negative. Um, so take a moment to read the items under effective monitoring. Why do you think it's important that the question is open-ended? Or why, why is that a measure of effectiveness that it's open-ended?
That leads to discussion.
Leads to discussion. Yeah. Why do you think it's important that the question is focused on understanding data rather than sharing opinions?
We have facts, not opinions.
Say that again.
We have facts, not opinions.
Yeah, focusing on facts rather than opinion. What other reflections do you have as you're reading these? Some of them, some of them align to what we've been talking about, but are a little more specific in as you're creating your questions. So what we're going to do next is as you're creating your questions, considering, does it meet these criteria or doesn't it meet these criteria? So any other thoughts, reflections or questions about these, these items in the rubric under effective monitoring?
You want to make sure your questions pertain to the specific data, not going off track, talking about something else.
Yeah. Focus on what, what we said we were going to focus on tonight. Other thoughts before we engage in an activity? Or questions? If you've got any questions? All right. How many people do you have around your table? Six, seven?
Seven.
Seven. Um, get into two.
Well, we have Mr. Lynch back here too. We can bring him up to the table.
Bring him in. Yeah.
And that baby can wait.
Come join them. Come join them. You're one of the principals, right?
Yes.
Yes.
You can say that or present later.
Are you a principal or a parent?
Well, I'm a high school principal.
Both.
Both. All right. So let's spend about the next 10 minutes getting into pairs. And using the monitor report that you have in front of you from tonight, each pair draft three questions that meet all five criteria of effective questions. And draft three questions that meet none of the criteria of an effective question. The three questions.
What is that supposed to be?
She thinks I'm a slacker.
And don't forget there, and, and I think that last document you have is just a separate copy of those current performance and future performance questions on page three. And those in, in and of themselves are not effective questions. Yeah, some of them might be. But they may not be relevant to this report. Yeah. So it's 7:35, so, or 7:35, so until 7:45. And I'm here if you've got any questions.
I know you're wrong, but you're always tired of work. And that would only be the difference.
This is three through six. So this is, yeah, this is the sixth through the seventh question.
I think you need to go back. Well, I heard if they turn in their homework late one. Let your kids take the specimens. Is that your question?
Yes.
Yeah. That's me. Right. So I suspect if you were able to do like a virtual. Maybe or something. Usually where people are defined.
And that's something like, I mean.
Well, you've got to be the exact answer. That's me. It didn't bring them this secret and know this kind of everything you'll win.
I think that'd be a good idea.
All right. I'll teach that to our kids. I have that. I should, I should, that's going to happen. Okay. To you. That's it.
Please be that.
Right. I want to work on it, right?
I, I read through that, that, that you said.
I didn't write them down. And three and three.
What?
You're out here.
Thank you. Does everyone have their three effective questions and their three ineffective questions?
The stupidest.
No, we don't have to do it. Does every, does everybody have their questions?
Wait, we have one more. Hold up.
More, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we haven't even got to six.
Any final? Cause they're all getting quiet. They're distracting us. Oh, are you? My computer is wrong.
Yep.
I'd operate my chair. I have one. Was trying to save the writing, but it's not good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, forgot. This is when we meet in the morning soon. And never on Mondays. Just wanted to say I want to work for her. Wow, she has that fact.
Performance based also. We do homework and interventions.
Oh, I bet you do intervention.
Right. So does everybody have their three effective, three ineffective? All right.
Didn't have five.
Someone, somebody, oh, that's the overachieving, I guess. With having more questions. Um, let's start with who would like to share one of their examples of an effective question?
Yes, effective or ineffective?
Effective.
Okay, thank you. I'm for that. Um, our first one was one or some specific ways that letters changed the approach to reading in the classroom. What does letter stand for? So technically two questions, but.
We're overachievers still.
Yeah.
Well. You know, you don't get a gold star.
What do y'all, what are the rest of y'all think? Do you think that that question meets all five criteria of an effective question?
I think that the question of what is letters stand for, that would be more of a technical question.
I would agree. That letters was brought up in her verbal report, Anna, on them.
There you go. That would be the difference. If that, if, if that term was in the written report, then that que, that technical question should be asked in advance. But if it was not in the written report and you heard it in the presentation in the meeting, by all means, ask that question. And I'm going to interject here. If there's ever anything that your superintendent is sharing that you just really don't understand, and it is going to inhibit you from understanding the rest of the presentation, by all means, chime in and say, can you please tell me what that means? So the 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 rest of the question is that it was the question about a strategic issue. There was that technical issue in the second half in it of it. But in the first half, is everyone in agreement? Or is there anyone that disagrees that it was a question about strategic issues? Can you can you restate the question?
What are some specific ways that letters change the approach to reading in the classroom?
So the strategy is letters, right? So this is definitely a strategic question. It's you wanna understand how this strategy has changed things in the classroom. Does it? Does the question reference specific metrics or data that has been required requested? Been provided the request of the board? And just to be clear, the whole report is actually data that was requested by the board. Is there specific data? Does it reference specific data?
I don't think so. It's not necessarily unless it's increasing.
So then how could you revise that question? So that it does reference specific data? And and I'm gonna I'm gonna answer and interject here. This report is a really hard one to do a training on cause the data is so good. Um. If you use the one the one of this from last time, like if you ignore today's data and just looked at the data from your previous ones on the on this measure, it makes it easier to come up with better questions. Because right now, it's just like everything's going great. Uh, so it does make it a little more challenging. But how could you incorporate data into that question?
You just reference one or um, one, one, you know, how the K two has, you know, other data has gone up and they know that they're using letters. So how did letters affect that? Amen.
Yeah. Is it open ended?
What if? Oh, I don't wanna hint stop from the ten. But it's a superintendent of a big, huge school district like, okay, let's say you're the superintendent of Fargo. And you're not really into the weeds on, you know, what's happening in your kindergarten, first and second grade classroom. But you're just getting this data. How do they? How do they answer those kinds of questions when it comes to the monitoring? I was monitoring now. Cause like, I know what's going on just because we're small enough and I thought, but how do you? How does?
So first of all, it makes me laugh that you think Fargo is big because I'm in Houston.
Okay.
We have twenty forty kids here as you have in your whole state. But I think it's it's a great question. Um. So a superintendent in a larger district that is farther away from the classroom than in a district your size has several layers of staff. And so what happened in my own district here is there were lead administrators who were asking all of these, like they were doing their own monitoring on what was working and what wasn't working. And then they were visiting with the superintendent. And so the superintendent did not have this intimate of knowledge of what what was going on in the classroom at all. Um, but the superintendent is still the one responsible for knowing. They just know through other people. So the the question that was lifted up, is it an open ended question?
Yes.
I mean, it wasn't a yes or no.
Too good for going.
Was it focused on understanding data rather than sharing opinions?
Yes.
Yep. Um, was it focused on current performance rather than future performance?
Yep.
How how is this working? Yeah. Um, I think the one improvement that could be made to it is tying it back to like, and think of it this way. What am I seeing in the data that's compelling me to ask this question? Right? And so this is what I'm seeing in the data. Just refer just reference your question back to that on page such and such on this progress measure. This is what I'm seeing. You know, how is this strategy? You know, you you and then you said this is this is what you're doing. How is it? How is it manifesting in these? These results? Yeah. So super close to an effective question. Um, who who would like to share next? Was another example of.
Oh, girl.
Beats the criteria of effectiveness. Yeah.
All right. In the K.
And talk really loud cause you're far away from me.
All right. In K through two, when the kindergartners start in the fall, my question would be is what can we do to prepare kindergarten students for preparing for the testing and preparing for the reading? Because our test scores are below our goal. But then when they test again in the winter time, you know, their their goals or their test results are very high.
Okay. All right, board colleagues. Is that question about strategic issues rather than technical or tactical issues?
Strategic.
I would agree that it's strategic. Um. Does the question reference specific metrics or data that has been provided at the? Well, let me back up. Does anybody disagree that it's strategic? Everyone want to tell me I'm wrong. I can be wrong.
Nope, you're right.
Okay. I've known to be wrong. Question reference specific metrics or data that has been provided at the request of the board?
Yes.
Is the question open ended?
Good.
Is the question focused on understanding data rather than sharing opinions?
Yes.
And is the question focused on current performance rather than future performance?
Yes.
The one improvement that I would offer up to that question, and this kind of leans into the focus on understanding rather than sharing opinions. There's a presumption in the question that the superintendent didn't do something different. And so a better way, a more effective way to ask that question would have been, you know, what is happening at the beginning of the year that is causing? And I'm at this point, I'm let me pull up the data. So like, cause you're looking at K two.
Yeah.
One, so um, one, I'm progress measure one point one.
Yeah.
Um. A more effective way of asking that question would be. Um. What is causing? So for goal progress measure one point one, the students are declining between the end of the previous year and the start of the current school year, and they do that historically year over year. Um, what is the reason for this? And what is the strategy to mitigate that in the for next year? Is you're it's you're it's getting at the same thing that you've just asked, right? You're you're seeing this in the data and you're wanting to understand why you're seeing it. But it doesn't make the presumption that nothing's being tried. And what you should then expect to see in response to that question is here's, you know, here's why, right? And here's what we're doing in response to why. And here's what we've identified as working. Or hey, what we tried this year didn't work as well as we hoped. So we're gonna try something different. Or if you look at the data, you know, superintendent might say, you know, as you can see, that that decline has gotten smaller this year than it did in previous years. And we did this thing last school year to mitigate our summer slide. I'm making that up. But what you wanna hear is, does your superintendent know why the data is telling the story it's telling? And what their plan is? If the if the story isn't what you want it to be in turn, and what and what you want it to be is defined as you're on track for the target or you met the target. Um. But if it's not what you want it to be, you should expect your superintendent to know why. And you should expect your superintendent to have a strategy for what to do next. Let's real quick talk about one sample question that you someone drafted that is was drafted as ineffective.
Do you feel listening to? Uh, do you feel listening is vital to the operations of the board meeting?
Do you feel listening is? Is optimal?
Vit- vital.
Is vital to operating the board meeting? Yeah, why is that an ineffective monitoring question?
So bad. I'm just thinking back to that. How many, how many question? Five. What are we doing? Ten? Are we doing? Three and three?
So how could you turn that into an a question that is effective? So were you trying? What were you trying to understand with that question? Were you just trying to be like one of my colleagues and be ornery?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I can't.
You'll get into this more. You're gonna start finding more curiosities. Like one of the curiosities, even though you can't get super granular and disaggregating your student groups because of FERPA, it is still fair game to ask. You especially if well, whether you're you've made a big increase or you're on the decline. You know, there are always students that are understanding it and 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 are achieving and always students that are struggling. And understanding that more like, hey, we're knocking it out of the park. You know, on goal progress measure one point one. For the students who are not achieving at this level, what are the challenges? And what is the strategy to get so that they are achieving at the same level? Um. That would be a question, you know, like you can dig into, you know, in that sort of way. And you might find as time goes on, you're asking questions that might precipitate more granular data. I was notorious as a board member until I started to to learn how to do this more effectively. But in a public meeting, I would ask, if we disaggregated the data this way, what would it tell us? And very consistently, every time our data person would say, well, we didn't disaggregate the data that way, so I can't tell you. And I learned to ask my questions more effectively, sometimes in advance. Um, but sometimes things would come up in a meeting where that would precipitate the next time we monitored that report to actually include that data. Let's say you had a particular, you weren't on track. And you had a particular, your superintendent's identified a particular group of students that if that you might be special ed or economically disadvantaged or might be your first graders. Um. That are holding your district back from being on track. Or even if you are on track, are still a struggle consistently struggling population. Your your is a board and superintendent, you might decide, let's start having an extra slide in there about this particular group of students. Cause if we don't move them, we're it's always gonna hold us back on on meeting the target. Does that make sense? And it it'll just come up. It'll come along over time that you might start digging a little further into data in some areas. Um, I'm gonna lift up, cause I think we're about out of time. Um, two, two final thoughts. One, and again, I am not at all suggesting that you guys rate and score your monitoring sessions. But I do wanna lift up under this preparation and participation. In this rubric, it recommend recommends that if any, if any monitoring conversation, there's a non participant, non participation by any board member present, then it's in this area, they score a zero. Why do you think it's important or recommended for all board members to participate? Why is that the aspiration that all board members are participating?
I don't think you want one person to monopolize. Don't you want everybody to have, you know, equally participate? Makes for better discussion.
Drives better discussion. There's a reason why you have five board members and not one. Everybody's gonna see things a little bit differently. And when somebody doesn't participate, something might get missed. It diminishes the quality of the conversation. Doesn't mean it's still not good. But it's slightly diminished when people, when when someone doesn't participate. And then another reason for it is, fast forward, again, you know, Anna's won the lottery and some moves to Cabo and some of it. A couple of people decide to stay. Now you've got a lot of new board members. And if those two board members that decided to stay hadn't been participating in this process, they're not able to to lead by example with the new board members. So again, not a requirement, just a recommendation that that increases the effectiveness of the conversation. Before we close out, um. If you guys have time, we don't have to do it all together, but it could be a great exercise for you guys as a group to just review together the questions that you drafted tonight. You know, did did this have meet all five criteria of an effective question? Um, between now and your next monitoring session, when you get your agenda with the report, if anybody wants to schedule one on one time or I think legally I can do it with a pair of you, but not a larger group than that. But if anybody wants to just review their questions with me um, or send them to me an email and ask for review. Or you could even get together in pairs before the meeting and say, hey, let's let's create our questions together um, and work as a, you know, small groups towards that. Um, those are different strategies that you could use to continue to build your effectiveness and build your muscle on this. Um, but before we under time together today, what questions do you have? What's coming up for you in this conversation? What things don't you understand or just things that you found interesting and didn't know before?
I appreciate now I know those tactical tactical and technical questions should be the Q and A. And then the other ones just kinda be aware that they're coming, but push those off to the side. So, yeah.
What should you do if this? What which should the superintendent do if she doesn't have an answer to a question in the meeting?
She'll get back to us.
Say that again?
That she'll get back to us and find out the answer for us.
Never wanna be the the again, and we did, I didn't review this with you at the. I I cannot over emphasize enough. This always should be a safe space for accountability. Right? This is modeling a safe space for accountability to your whole organization. And if you're in a place where a superintendent is making up an answer because they don't feel comfortable saying they don't know, then that is a clear indicator that it's not a safe space. I don't again, expect that's ever gonna happen with your organization, but still a good thing to be mindful of. Other questions or thoughts do you have before we close out? None? Can we do a quick round the table? One word checkout? In one word, as you reflect on this training today, our time together, in one word, as you reflect on what you will take with you, what would that one word be? Would like to start? And just around around the table.
Understanding.
Understanding.
Effective.
Effective. Effective.
Oh, uh, defining.
Defining.
Slightly, slightly confusing. That's two words.
Slightly confusing? Is there anything I can do to make it less confusing?
I do numbers, not words.
Oh, sure. Next. Educational.
Um, one word. Well, I'm gonna use two, though. A good refresher.
Good refresher.
I think clarifying the rules.
Clarifying. All right. Is that everybody?
No. Mr. Winchester, go ahead. Informative.
Informative. Always. It is a joy to work with y'all. Again, if anybody wants to visit about this between now and any future monitoring session, just don't hesitate to reach out. Happy to visit.
That's good.
Number three can be sent agenda. Well, I've had everything in your packets, so. Fire most time second. Cross six seconds. Shannon, would you call the roll on that seat?
Patty Carlson.
Yeah.
Brian Sire. Ron De Day.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
You bet.
Monica Heimberg.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Um, item four. The reports, everybody have those reports in their package review. Um, moving on to item number five, items for discussion and possible action. Item A under that is our school board election votes canvassing. Shannon, do you want to take us through that?
I sure will.
Oh, no, I thought you would.
All right, so everybody has seen their, um. The poll books and the. Explanation I gave, I printed two hundred ballots. I had one absentee ballot. There was a hundred and four leftover ballots and ninety-five. Cast ballots. So that makes our two hundred printed ballots that come before. I received the absentee ballot after the election closed. Um, however. I will pass it around and it is dated by the postmarked of June eleven. And I'll look at that to pass it around. So everybody can see that. Uh, North Forto Central code sixteen point one dash seven dash zero nine. Canvassing of mailed absent voters ballot received late. There's several sentences, but the one that contains any envelope. Containing an absent voter's ballot with a postmark or official date stamp. On the day of election or thereafter may not be tallied with the ballots timely submitted for the election.
Therefore, that gets shredded.
Therefore, this would get shredded. I had received one other application, however, I got received both applications from the county auditor. This one was signed, the other one wasn't, and I contacted the elector and. Never received another completed out patients. So therefore, we just had the one ballot that I did send out. Uh, the ballots, let's see, it was ninety-five or no, it was total of ninety-five. I kept it up in my head. See how many were for Ryan last? Forty, was it forty? Forty for Ryan, forty ballots were cast for Ryan Rosendale, thirty-three for Ron De Day, and twenty-two for Katie May. So then that for ninety-five ballots.
Are there any questions for this? Do we need a roll call for that? Okay. Wait. Did somebody have a motion to approve the, the school board election votes canvassing as presented? So. If you go home, do I have a second? Fire seconds.
Uh, Ron De Day.
Yes.
Patty Carlton. Brian Sire. Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Monica Heimberg.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Moving on to item B, bus bids opening. Who gets the pleasure of opening the bus bid?
We have two bus bids. Well, I think we have one at the time of the survey. But hey, I haven't received another one. This one. Is from Harlow's. Lot of information. They have a twenty twenty-six stop international for a hundred fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-two. And then they have a one twenty twenty-six international that they must have to order for a hundred and sixty-two, eight oh two. The only date is approximately November, December twenty twenty-five.
And what is the budget from this?
The budget.
For the bus. Don't we have a grant to pay for?
Oh, um. Yeah.
Thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven is the amount of the grant.
So then do we have something in the preliminary budget for the bus?
Yeah, if he put it out of the miscellaneous.
Oh, my, oh, so. Yeah, that was.
They said that towards the end there. It's underbusted. I don't know if that's. Does that pay what the buses are?
Can we get the last ones? Uh, no, we got the last one from IC.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, let's see if I can find.
Yeah, if it meets all the specifications, so it doesn't meet our specifications.
I thought Dave was saying that one time, one of the trip keep them all the same.
We have.
Maybe it's added in the other pack.
Yep. We have a Thomas, a bluebird, a Thomas, a Thomas, a Thomas, a Thomas, a bluebird, and international, and a Thomas.
Is, what's number nine? Is that, you have that on there?
What's number nine is an international.
That's the one. That's the land.
Because the Thomas is.
This is IC. This is, uh. This is IC.
Hundred fifty-seven thousand one. Here. Because that's back on, right?
So that's just copy. And so this one is a Thomas from IC date. Um, this is a. They should be all the same. This is one hundred fifty-five thousand three hundred.
Where's table medium on vacation?
That one.
When was the last time?
You'd be by it last year, right, the last year. Mary Curtis, ten, the thirtieth of twenty twenty-four.
And what does that one say? One fifty-five, three hundred?
Yeah. One fifty-seven, sixty-two, plus.
Well, no, it's up to. You'll learn. It's a lot.
And no, and the other part of it's included. One fifty-seven, six, six, sixty-seven, six, six, two, three.
They haven't even built either one. This one we're going to be built in August.
Yeah.
But I expect it's gonna be built in November. But we wouldn't be getting this bus in, no. I think I put the specs out. We had to receive it by June thirty of twenty nineteen.
I need to show six. Yep. Wait. Okay, wait, good. Anybody have a motion to approve any of these? Or would we like to have a motion to open a discussion of the bus bids?
I'll make a motion to open discussion.
Got it. Two seconds. Okay. Cross six seconds. On never say I. Five, I'll post inside. All right, discussion is open on bus bids. I'm really struggling with purchasing a bus right now. While we're looking at a preliminary budget on the carryover of seventy percent. I want to do a budget concept and that's one of the comments.
We're struggling with this. The grant is. Right. So the, you know, the grant came out, so that's one fourth of the bus. So we have a bus, I sent you the, uh, the inventory of the buses. So we do have that one that is an eighteen-year-old bus from the two thousand six. That, you know, I mean, some of them were subs. I wish Dave was here to, you know. And I, I mean, I, I, I totally get what you, what we're talking about, you know, that. The kind of money, but like bus nine is on lemon that we can't use at all. And we can't send it outside of town. So you've got that one. And we have two buses that we don't purchase now. They're twelve years and. Well, we've actually got one, two, three buses that are. So, you know, it's no different than our facility where we kick the can down the road and we don't. Make sure that we stay up when we've got opportunities. And there could be more grants that would come up. But we know we're in bad money shape this year, right? But actually looking ahead, this is gonna be our best year money-wise. Next year, we already know how much, you know, that we're in a worse shape next year. And if you. Listen, the legislators are saying that. The state is looking at less money. They're saying that this is gonna look like a flush year, what we got this year compared to what they're looking at at the next. So we could be four years down the road and not have bought a bus. And and all of our buses are four years older. And what, I don't think Dave would say, yes, we, we absolutely need to have this bus. We're not having that buses. But, you know, he's. He tells us, you know, I need to do this maintenance. I need to do that maintenance. I've got these things that need to be done.
But. Doing table this until Dave is here for discussion. And then my next thought is, is I understand where our budget sits, but if we don't stay on a. A rolling, as far as replacing buses, we're gonna get really behind and then we'll be a lot of trouble to have to try to come up with four buses. At one time, so I. See both sides of it. When, when do we have, nobody. Were done.
Thirty days from the opening. Yeah.
So that means from the moment you opened the bid here or from?
Which is good for thirty days from bid opening date.
Is that when we open the bid and put it out? Or is that when you open the bid that they gave you?
Today. What does that one say, right? Does it say that in the yellow right there? What does it say?
No, it's.
But I meant the grant that we have. When does that expire?
Oh. I think we've got it for a little while.
Until June thirty of the twenty-sixth, and then we could possibly accept it.
I would think.
We've already technically accepted it. It's just a matter of if we choose not to buy the bus. We have, I have to let, uh, the department know what they'll.
I would think that if we talked IC and we said that we tabled it until next month, I think it was a great period.
Yeah, so. So this report you gave us doesn't have mile, what the mileage.
I told you, Shannon, you have the mileage on. Uh, which bus, bus nine? Is that what you're looking at?
Oh, and bus nine is just new enough that we can't use it to trade in. So, you know, our oldest bus that we have on here, two thousand six, that two thousand six would be the one that we would, um, put out a commission. So we're waiting for that. Or when it's the two thousand six.
We have to put it out of commission.
Yeah, you have to put a bus out of commission. So we're not gonna be increasing our fleet. We're just gonna be replacing.
And it has to be the oldest.
It has to meet four, um, dates, right? So that's, that's the oldest one then. Yeah.
So next year with bus nine, qualify?
Next year, the following year, we're, we're thinking, because right now I think it's two thousand ten and it's like two thousand eleven. Dave and I, huh, I might, I might be wrong on the date on those ones. But we checked on it and we're like one or two years behind being able to trade in the women. And that, like I said, that bus just sits there. Body's great, seats are great, but the engine, you can't trust it. We can't send it out on the road.
So bus one A is a hundred and ten, hundred and ten thousand miles. So bus one A is a hundred and ten, hundred and ten thousand miles. Bus two A. Who has fifty-six thousand miles. Bus seven has thirty-five. Bus eight has. Four, no, yep, fourteen thousand miles. Is that right? Bus eight? And the number for the one of ours. And I just have, on this sheet, I just have bus eight. Bus one A has a hundred and eleven. Two A has fifty-five. Those white, that's one of the.
You said one A and two A twice. Or you just re-read?
I'm, I must be just rereading them, why didn't I say one, one A has a hundred and eleven thousand?
So is anybody ready to make a decision on this tonight? I feel like we're not. But we want to talk today first.
Yeah.
And then I will get, I'm going to have him, um, he had a report that he had that's got the mileage. And then also things that we are needing fixed on each of those, because there's some expensive fixes.
So can we read what that Dave puts kind of a rate up on this in, in the packet? Yes. We're going to have that out to us shortly. We're meeting, because Dave is two weeks from tomorrow, so. That's plenty of time and.
Just look at semis and you can get millions of miles on some things without. Needing to buy new soul.
We find others, there should have been one in bus nine.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And he might have it numbered differently on. Because we run by routes, but then the buses have bus numbers, so there's always this, which one is that, which one is that one, what bus is this, you know, so, yeah, okay.
Bring back. Okay, so do we have a motion to table this?
We don't need, we don't need. We don't need to, because the only motion we have is to open a session.
We don't need to close it, we don't.
Perfect, no action taken.
All right, let's move on to see who the twenty twenty-five Hall of Fame inductees. Um. We had a. Uh, committee of Jerry Kraska, Nancy Maddox, and former President Sonia Neill, um, looking through our. Hall of Fame, um. Nominations for this year, they actually came back to us with two that they recommend that we approve for inducting, um, into the twenty twenty-five Hall of Fame. Um, the first one would be, um, Rich Vogel. Thank you. Um, the nominee, or the nomination form says, it is with great pride and admiration that we nominate Rich Vogel for induction into the Hall of Fame. That we no longer reside in our community, which is legacy continues to make lasting impact through the lives he touched on the programs he helped build. Rich dedicated countless hours to youth athletics, playing a vital role in the development of elementary football and wrestling programs across all age groups. His influence extended far beyond coaching, he mentored young athletes, instilling in them the values of hard work, sportsmanship, and perseverance. Known as the unmistakable voice of tornado wrestling, Rich was a fixture at meets, always bringing energy and pride in his trademark orange suit. His contributions didn't stop with sports. Rich was a devoted Boy Scouts volunteer, consistently stepping up to support events like the Pinewood Derby and guiding scouts on their path to personal growth and leadership. His presence brought a sense of fun, encouragement, and purpose to every gathering. Rich Vogel is the definition of a real, his selfless service, infectious enthusiasm, and dedication to our youth left a strong and lasting impression on this community. Though he may live elsewhere now, the positive influence he had here is deeply felt and fondly remembered. For these reasons and more, we proudly nominate Rich Vogel for the Hall of Fame. Um, he was nominated by Lacey Anderson, so I would contact her and let her. Go with your approval, that's just. Would be as inducted in, um. Right, okay, that's for nation. Um. Our second recommendation is Sarah LaMogla. Um, she was nominated by Terri Schmitz. Sarah was born in nineteen eighty-three in Oxford, Rhode Island, O H S graduate in two thousand and one. On June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, Sarah was nominated by President Joe Biden to serve as the United States District Judge. For the U S District Court for the District of Connecticut. Her nomination was confirmed and she was sworn in on November third, twenty twenty-one. She is the first judge of South Asian descent to serve on the district court for the District of Connecticut. Prior to her appointment, she was part of the U S Attorney's Office for the District of Connecticut. Prosecuted cases involving child exploitation, human trafficking, hate crimes, government fraud, identity theft, and other matters. These are the two names that I am bringing to you for renovation for the inductees, if they can get K's motion.
Madam President, can you spell that first name, please?
Um, Sarah, S A R A L A. R I C H. Anything? Do I have a nominating, or do I have a motion to approve these nominees? The motion, do I have a second? Seconds, do I? Do I need to call open this? On their birthday, I.
Bye.
Our post, same thing. All right, well, we are proud to, um, have these guys to our O H S. For O P S. All right, items D and E will kind of combine here, um, board member Nigle asked for these to be pulled to the discussions, would you want to leave this?
Sure. Okay, um. Basically, I wanted this called because we discussed our teacher negotiations. All at the open, so I thought, since we negotiate with Anna and Shannon, we should do the same thing. We do not negotiate with the principals, that's up to, um, Anna, so I have to do those. So, um, Anna's salary, um, she agreed to no increase in her base. And she gets everything the teachers got, so the one point five percent T F F R, um, increase, um, on our percentage that we pay. And two hundred dollars to the H S A paid by O H S or O P S. Um, her health insurance is, was on the high deductible, so there was no change in that. So her overall increase, um, in benefits and salary is one point nine one percent. Did I miss anything? Okay. Um, Shannon's, uh. She requested a increase in salary of one thousand five hundred and fifty cents. Um, health insurance, she is on the traditional plan. We did agree to leave it at the traditional for this year, um, basically because there's only a hundred and twenty-seven dollar difference. Between the high deductible plus the nineteen hundred that we would pay into the section one twenty-five. With the understanding that she probably would not get the traditional next year. Um, so her overall increase is two point four two percent. She is also requesting to carry over five days of vacation, which according to O P S policy, that's supposed to get out rather than carry over. We do have the right to. Okay, that if we want to. Um. As far as the vacation goes, I worry about that opening a can of worms. Unforeseen consequences.
I had a motion to approve the superintendent and business manager contracts. Do I need to do those separately, since they're.
Probably.
Are they separately?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's do the superintendent contract. And then we can open the discussion after we. So. Uh, Niggle, will you drive the second?
Sorry.
All right, motions. Eight seconds. I'm on your Shannon. That was a lot. That's right. Is, is there any discussion on the superintendent contract?
Do you need to take, uh, not take it all, but. All in favor of opening discussions on. She did a motion to. Oh, okay, I, okay, sorry.
Okay. Well, once that motion is made, it's, then we can open the session on it, so is there any discussion on. On the super, superintendent contract? Did I ask that three times? I did. Okay, do we need a roll call on this?
Problem.
Okay.
Sheila Nagel. Yes. Brian Sire. Ron with A.
Yes.
Patty Carlson.
Yeah.
Ron with a hind buck.
Yes, motion passes by zero. All right, um, moving on to the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six business manager contract, um, to an option to. Mm-hmm. Across the move, starting second. Second. Niggle, seconds, is there any discussion on this?
Can you explain that again, your concern?
So, policy which was included in the packet is that, um, vacation is to be, if it's not used, it gets paid out, and do you have it in front of you?
I do.
It was fifty dollars.
Okay.
Um. Instead of being able. Then we can vote to. I mean, on a case-by-case basis, we can always vote to override policy.
Shannon, did you want to say your request kind of?
Um. I guess it's just personal, I was kind of saving it, um, for. Family activities. And I didn't need to use as much as I did, or I didn't need to use as much as I had saved up in April and May or June. And I have some more activities coming up in twenty-five, twenty-six. And so it would be nice to have those extra five days to use up right away in July and August this summer.
Any other questions, discussion?
And we can just do this on a case by case?
Would we do it by case on every teacher? Or as teachers and.
This is just.
This would be.
Teachers would get vacation.
Not have any.
Yeah.
Um, if you did look at contract two, it did say that it's supposed to let type request.
I see both sides very clearly.
I think it's a tough call, because.
Very tough.
You can, you know. How do we define what's. Justifiable and carryover, we shouldn't be.
How many staff are considered possible? Um. Most of the elders.
Familiar. The custodians. No. They don't, they don't get vacation, the only people that get vacation that I are the custodians. Uh, Harry Albin, myself, and Hannah. I'm sure.
It's a tool, it's just vacation.
He's on vacation. I give my thoughts, what are your thoughts?
I've always worked in companies that let you carry it over, I mean, I don't, never really feel that about it.
Shannon's contract is just a little different though, because she's not hourly, she's galleryed where everybody else is at.
Yeah, I see. I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of anything, we're just approving something you didn't know about. Because just looking at the contract, you didn't know what the cost was.
Okay, so we either need to move forward with the proving and as written, or I need somebody to make a motion to amend this to.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Well, that's already. Okay. Well, wasn't that already the motion?
Yeah, so we just.
Any discussion, any discussion? Hearing none, Shannon.
Brian Sire.
Yes.
Patty Carlson.
Yeah.
Ron with A.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Monica Heimbuck.
Yes, motion passes by zero, somebody's packing.
She.
All right, well, we have, I'll kind of. Combine these together, just to open the session, I guess, um, I had those at G and H, board member Nigle also. Um, requested those to be moved, I think. Probably throwing these out into the open, but I'll let you.
Take your train.
All right.
Yes, I suppose we should do that. Okay. I'll make a motion.
Okay, Niggle makes a motion to approve the first reading of new policy, and if I personal electronic communication devices prohibition during instructional time, do I have a second? Across the seconds, great discussion on this.
All right, the only reason I really want to publish a color for her is because this is something completely new to the state. This, this is out of our control and it's law. So. I think I had one thing I, looking at. Oh, what page are we on here?
Okay, should I say that? Just to reference, so the public and everything, this is our new policy that is mandated that we approve with the law, uh, banning. Personal devices, personal electronic devices during instructional hours.
I mean, so the only thing, uh, there were certain things that we could either. Put in or leave out, correct? And that's what Anna has highlighted in mine. Uh, so on page six, letter G. That last sentence in there makes, to me, it sounds like they are expected to use them whether they want to or not. So I thought it should be only. Where did I say?
Yeah. Employees are expected to use personal devices during non-instructional times and other breaks in the school, and I think that employees.
I remember one of these.
Yeah.
I have, I inserted the word only in there someplace.
Only non-instructional?
Someplace. Is that, I don't.
Oh, if what is expected to use personal devices only during non-instructional, is that what you're.
Maybe I'm the only one that resets sentence that way, but.
Stats clarification, I don't.
I mean, that's the way it was sent to her from school or association, but to be, something like it's a directive that they expected to use them. Whether they want to, we need to or not. And I think one thing to point out too is this. Everyone has to place this, every adult working in the building.
Everyone. Uh, Shannon and I were having that conversation too, so Shannon sees somebody that is walking down the hall with their phone and she doesn't do something about it. If you read it here, they can be fired.
So.
All of our job workers.
Yeah.
Yeah. Something in the club to parents. To discuss that, you know what I mean? Just so that they're a little more aware, so when kids start coming home saying, oh, the janitor is telling me, you know, or whatever, sisler, you know. There's a broader understanding that it's not just.
Teachers.
It's, yeah.
Yeah, so they received, I sent first notice of this, you know, right after school got out, waiting for you guys to approve this. And once it's approved, then there will be things coming from me, and then there will be at the principal's level, because then it'll say, okay. Because this, this requires, the law requires that there are consequences, you can't just say, oh, you know, that's okay. If they have to have consequences and they have to keep track of it, so we have to keep the data. So Jordan and Gray both have their procedures that they're going to be following, that'll be in their handbooks that you'll get that next month. But they'll also be communicating, because that's in the law also, that all of this stuff has to be communicated with parents. Um, there's, if there's just, there's just a ton of stuff in here, and we sat through a web, or, um, a meeting with school boards on, that here's what you have to do, here's. Now, there isn't anything restricting employee use, but we felt like we wanted to go with what school boards has in here, because for kids to not be using their devices, then how do. Kids to not be using their devices, then how do we as teachers?
Yeah.
We didn't tie the principals into, it's not going to be in the policy what their um rules are or what their uh. Consequences are going to be, but that will be outlined in everything that they share with the parents. So and it's going to be one that's. The consequences are not going to make parents happy because the parents are going to be held responsible for it and, you know. And again, like I said, we'll share that out with you guys. You all know what it is and they'll be communicating it, obviously, again.
Any other discussion on? First reading.
But did you change the word? Expected then?
Expected.
You know, where it says.
Devices only during non-instructional. Where you put it?
I think so.
Employees with the.
Well. Yeah.
Employees are expected to use personal devices only during um instructional times.
Expected.
So I think probably what you'll have to do then is somebody will have to um. Amend this to say that prove the first reading with this change, right? Because we can move forward, we're just going to have to go through your first reading with this change, you're going to approve it.
Actually, I think I said employees are expected to only use.
Always.
Only.
You want that in there?
Maybe that's not.
And it. Probably weird, right though? May only use personal devices. So instead of employees are expected, employees may only use personal devices.
You want to hurt that out of there?
So you're taking the sections out?
No, we're editing it. Employees will take out are expected to just employees may. May use personal devices during non-instructional time and other breaks in school day.
Okay. Okay, so we're deleting. Uh, are expected. In. Paragraph G.
Do I have a motion to get that amended?
Yes.
There are moves, do I have a second? Second. Nagel, seconds. We need a roll call.
Yeah. Okay, first reading.
And we are.
We need the amendment on. I think we have to do these step by step.
Right.
Uh, Ron De Day.
Yes.
Brian Sayer.
Yeah.
Patty Carlson.
Yeah.
Uh, Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
And Monica Heimbach.
Yes, motion passes five zero for the amendments. Now, do we need to approve the? First reading? Is that an amendment for that motion still? Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the first reading of any policy? Ross, let's go to the second.
Second.
Hey, seconds. Oliver on that, please.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Ron De Day.
Yes.
Brian Sayer. Patty Carlson, Monica Heimbach.
Yes, sorry. Motion passes five zero. Moving on to item G, approve waiving the second reading of new policy of I personal electronic communication devices prohibition. Prohibition during instructional time. Do I have a motion for that? So. Nagel, move to the second.
Third.
So your second. Um, may you please call a roll on that?
Brian Sayer.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Patty Carlson.
Yeah.
Ron De Day.
Yes.
Monica Heimbach.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Moving on to item H, approve adoption of new policy of I personal electronic communication devices prohibition during instructional time. Do I, do I have a motion for that? Dame, so a second. Ross, in seconds, may you please call the roll on files.
Patty Carlson.
Yeah.
Ron De Day.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Brian Sayer. Monica Heimbach.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Um, moving on to item six, future meetings. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, July eighth, twenty twenty five at seven AM, which will be our reorganization meeting. Um, and then the proposed annual board retreat Wednesday, August fifth at six PM, so. Do that at this time, but to keep that. Um, on the radar, I guess. Further business for the good order, I would just like to extend a thank you to Ron De Day for your three years of service on the board. Appreciate you, we appreciate you, and we will miss you. Um, no other business, I will declare the meeting adjourned at. It was eight fifty nine.